Okay, at seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the Village Nuclearis Board meeting to order. Lynn, would you do the roll, please?
Roger?
They're calling.
Chuck?
Uh, yes.
Lori Wertz. Peggy Cruz.
She's muted.
Yep.
Okay, you're, am I good now?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay.
Mike Ganser.
Yes.
Tammy Newberry.
Yes.
Michael Bell. Looks like we've got five. No Michael Bell, no Lori Wertz.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Uh, moving on to item two, I look for approval of the agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 opposed? Motion carries. Item three, public appearances and citizens' comments. No debate will occur with the board on items introduced by citizens. Items will not be acted upon at this meeting, but will be referred to the proper staff and committee if action is required. And please keep your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay. Hearing none, we go on to item four, approval of the consent agenda.
Ganser, Mike, I would move for the approval of consent agenda.
Tammy, I'll second.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, Parks and Recreation. A, Committee Chairperson Report. Chuck?
Um, just for the record, I think Lori's on board now, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Chuck.
You have the Parks and Recreation Committee report on the page one of of our agenda packet. And main item is uh, park use application by Nuclearis Vision for Hoesley Park. Their application is on page twenty. And they're requesting use of the park for a, a ice fishing, it's ice fishing event. I guess you all have the application, you know what parameters are, along with the the Sorry, I'm, I'm engaged in another, another activity here. At any rate, the Parks Committee decided that it was a this, this event would be done within safe guidelines, and we're recommending that the event be approved.
So Chuck, my understanding is it's this Saturday?
That's correct.
Wait. Um, this is Tammy, I'll make a motion to approve that park request.
Lori, I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item six, Public Works Public Safety. Peggy, Committee Chairperson Report.
Um, yes, we had three items on the agenda last week, and one was an ordinance to amend section two eight, eight fifteen for restrictions on parking and standing in certain places, predominantly because of mail delivery. So now we have an ordinance that requires you to be within or away four feet on either side from mailboxes and such. And in order to clarify, your handout should show in red, the additional items to be added, we voted to approve that because it was causing some problems, and there were citizens who were complaining. Then the other item that we discussed was authorizing Drake to file financial assistance from the state of Wisconsin for improvement fund. So we approved that, and then the last was Joe gave us an update on wastewater treatment plant. That was it.
Okay, okay Peggy, thank you. I guess we'll go back to item B then, consideration discussed on approval of ordinance twenty-one dash zero one to amend section two eighty-eight dash fifteen restrictions on parking and standing in certain places.
Uh, the main, as Peggy had mentioned, this came up, some complaints that have been arising with the police department, phone calls of people unable to get their mail due to blocked mail, mailboxes. Now, there is no federal or state requirement to prohibit parking in front of mailboxes. However, municipalities are free to enact such restrictions. As you can see, this is an amendment, this is an amendment to section two eighty-eight dash fifteen to add a puts in a new section E, and essentially it's between the hours of six AM and eight PM, Monday through Sunday. Within four feet on either sides of the mailboxes, with three exceptions that are listed in the proposed change.
I'm gonna go ahead and approve ordinance of section two eighty-eight fifteen for restrictions on parking and standing in certain places, only because it seems very reasonable.
Michael Bell, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mike here. I
Go ahead, Mike.
I, I kinda brought up this up at the um, committee meeting, but it didn't seem to go anywhere, but I'm gonna bring it up again. I'm all for what I see here on the restrictions, except for A, number eight. In any place or manner so as to obstruct, block, or impede traffic. I understand that, but how about pedestrian traffic? Time and time again, there's a residence on Sixth Avenue. Just a block down from Tammy that obstructed the sidewalk. They parked their car there and obstructed the sidewalk, to impede the pedestrian traffic. Now, at the meeting, somebody said that that had been resolved, well, I don't see it as being resolved. I, every time I drive by there, I see it parked in the driveway.
Is this the small red car?
Yep.
Yeah, I talked to Joe about that, and he said that there hasn't been any problem since, I guess I haven't looked since he said that, I was looking for a while, but he said that that had been resolved.
Uh, not so. I parked there again today. So
Okay, well.
I've got another question. If, if it's not impeding pedestrian traffic, uh, what is it doing there? And if it's not parked on the sidewalk, how much uh, does it need to stick out? In other words, how much percentage-wise does the car need to block before we do anything about it?
Bert or Jeff, are you able to speak to that?
Yeah, I'm just looking down further in it to see if there was anything else that covered that, because I believe there is something for obstructing the sidewalk. If you look up in subsection three where it says on a sidewalk. So if somebody was parked on a sidewalk or across the sidewalk from driveway to driveway, I think that would fall under the the ordinance there, because it would be blocking the sidewalk.
I, I tend to agree with you, Bert, but time and time again, I see that vehicle parked there.
Yeah, and typically what we would deal with is if we get complaints, and you know, one of the things that we've noticed throughout the village is a lot of the driveways are shorter, and people are doing whatever they can to try to squeeze their cars, you know, in the driveway. And it's not only on Sixth Avenue, but it's throughout the village that quite often you can see somebody's got a bumper or a trailer hitch sticking across the sidewalk. And, you know, I mean, again, I think typically the officers have used discretion, and you know, this person's lived there for fifteen years. Do we want to open Pandora's box and start writing tickets because their, their bumper's a foot into the sidewalk? And I agree, it's a hazard, and if somebody would hit it on a bike or skateboard or walking, you know, the person would probably have some liability because it was on a sidewalk. But again, I think it's something, Mike, that we've just, if we get complaints, you know, like a festival weekend where somebody says, hey, this car's parked across the driveway, and it's not my neighbors, I don't know who it is, I mean, I'm sorry, the sidewalk, I don't know who it is or whatever, we, of course, will take action. Or if they're, you know, blatantly blocking something in the downtown area, the business area, you know, across the sidewalk. But I do know it's quite a common thing to see, and the vehicle's blocking sidewalks, and I'm sure Joe can kinda chime in a little bit there, because when he's plowing snow, he sees it, and particularly more so in the winter, when people are trying to maybe squeeze two cars in a driveway that's really designed for one legally. And because of that, it sticks because of the alternate side parking and so on and so forth, so. And I, I know the house that you're talking about, but, you know, without a complaint, we typically, you know, we're trying to use discretion and keep everybody happy, I guess.
I, I understand your feelings about that, Bert. I guess I look back, back in nineteen eighty, I, nobody was on the board that's presently on the board that was there then. But out in the, well, approximately six blocks from downtown area, there was a guy that was just repeatedly doing that. Vended. And so we did something about it, and I'm talking about this area being downtown where there typically is, is a lot of whip traffic. Tammy, do you have anything to add to that? Is that an issue for you, or is it not?
So first, I want to clarify, so it's actually in the ordinance, it's actually currently already uh, something that's not allowed, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, if you look at page twenty-one on your handout that everybody has in section two eighty-eight fifteen, it says parking restrictions, no parking, stopping, it's prohibited in specific areas. In section three is on a sidewalk, period. So legally, anything blocking a sidewalk, whether you're parked across it, you got your tire on it, a bumper on it, or a front end on it, or whatever, in my interpretation, would be on a sidewalk. And that would be
The motion in
Go ahead, Tammy.
So the motion in the second that we have on right now, doesn't need to be altered to make that it's already addressed. So we don't have to so that has nothing to do with what we're doing on that. So it's just a matter of, so in answer to your question, Mike, yes, I have noticed that, and yes, it sometimes is frustrating for us heading down there, especially if we have family and stuff visiting, you actually have to go out into the street to walk around it. So it's just something that we just always dealt with, but yes, I, I would say that as people who frequent that sidewalk, we've had to walk around that vehicle several times. Motion in second. There you go, Bert.
No, go, go ahead. I think we should settle the mailbox thing, and then we can go back to the sidewalk thing.
Well, I think, wait a minute.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to clarify.
Right.
Is this not already settled within within the ordinance to amend? Why, why do we have to, if it's already prohibited, why are we discussing it? It's a matter of enforcement rather than 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 an ordinance restriction, right? It's there.
Yeah, I agree with Chuck, I agree wholeheartedly what you're saying. You guys started on with the motion, then Mike brought up the sidewalk, and who's ever managing the motion can deal with that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's the same way with parking in front of somebody's driveway.
Correct.
Um, it's, it's, it's prohibited.
That's correct.
So I'm not sure why, I'm not sure what what Mike's questions. I, I, aside, aside from venting, it's prohibited, and that's, that's what we're acting on here, right, is the restrictions on parking and standing in certain places, which includes their prohibition of parking on a sidewalk, right?
Well, I'm looking at it this way, Chuck. I agree with you, it's on a sidewalk, is prohibited, but what if any of the four tires are not on the sidewalk? Does that mean that they're not parked on the sidewalk? And number eight, in any place or manner so as to obstruct, block, or impede traffic, and I'm saying, why not add pedestrian traffic?
I, I think
I don't think, I don't think section eight, paragraph eight, whatever it is, has any real bearing on it. I think number, item three, paragraph three, whatever it is, I, I think that's that's what it is. You can't park on a sidewalk.
Okay, but let's enforce.
If you're parked on a sidewalk, whether it be your trailer hitch, your, the end of your vehicle, or your whole vehicle, you're parked on a sidewalk.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
So the big problem is where do the, where do the law enforcement folks weigh in on this? And normally, it's a matter of calling calling the police, and they go and make a determination as to whether you have parked on a sidewalk. And that's pretty much where we have to leave the, leave the matter, isn't it?
Okay, so the enforcement or bringing to task is actually the citizens' duty then, and not the police department?
Hey, Mike, I'll just interrupt. This is Jeff. I'll take it as you're complaining. Tomorrow, I will go make contact with Ms. Winters and speak to her about it.
Hey, I understand that, Jeff. Do I need to complain every day?
No, 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 we'll, we'll go, we'll go talk to her and tell her she can't park there. I mean, we kinda, like the chief said, we use discretion in the past. I mean, she doesn't drive a normal-sized vehicle, she bought a smaller vehicle, she doesn't have a driveway. Now she's gonna be, you know, have to park more on the streets, which is gonna create more problems for plowing and all that. So that's kinda why we used our discretion. She didn't have a full-size vehicle, a truck, it's only a small portion of her bumper that sticks over. It's not a complete block, but I mean, it is an ordinance violation, so we'll go talk to her tomorrow.
Well, I, I can understand the burden of hardship that it may place upon her. I also understand the burden of hardship for the pedestrian trying to get down safely get down the sidewalk. Um, I also understand that cars in the streets are an issue, especially for snow plowing. And I've made an attempt, that suggestion to resolve that too, but it's been shot down.
I think, I think I think we have a, a larger problem here, Mike. Um, in, you know, it's just a whole matter of of personal responsibility. This is, I, I, I totally agree with you about the imposition this puts on people. But how far do we go in, in pushing these things? It is up to a citizen complaint. There are very few days in, in normal times when I go down on my twice-daily walks through Main Street, that I don't see cars backed into parking spaces, which is illegal by, by state statute. You can't back across traffic. There are cars parked on the wrong side of the street, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I, I don't think, I don't think by by our enactment of this, this ordinance to amend, we're, we're going to address those situations. In the summer, it's pretty much a daily occurrence, people park in my driveway. It's illegal to park within four feet of a driveway. And I, you know, I have called law enforcement about it. I think it's, I think it's just something that we can't let me put it this way, what would you, what would you like to see added in here, Mike?
Well, I would like to see, in, in any place or manners, so as to obstruct, block, or impede car traffic and pedestrian traffic. I think it's just a double way of covering that, Chuck.
All right.
And, and I also, I also understand the matter of inconvenience. But, so, we as a village board, are we supposed to just say, okay, we don't, we don't wanna inconvenience anything? Anybody? So we'll just turn to blind eye?
No, I, I, I hear you, you know, but I, I do believe rules is rules.
Can I, I'd like to interject something here, quick, Chuck. We have a motion in a second about this item B. Now either we can vote on that, or withdraw the motion and send it back to committee again. So, uh, who made the motion? I can't remember.
I did, I did, Peggy did.
Okay, Peggy. So do you wanna withdraw your motion, or do you wanna take a vote on this?
Well, I, I don't see the language as having the issue right now. The language that we're adding is really, has nothing to do with the car park. So what I'm thinking, I agree with Chuck, that we should just perhaps go to this person and perhaps then discuss that with them, put something in the newspaper, and then be a little more vigilant about checking those things. That's the best we can do. We can't correct, you know, every error that's made, but we can if there is a, if, if there is a, a real oversight on parking by a particular citizen, and it's really obstructing, then by all means, go and stop. But again, in a perfect world, it would work, but in this case, we just need to perhaps be more vigilant about checking when those kinds of things happen. But do approach the woman and the language, move forward with this language, because it has really uh, nothing to do, we've already have a, a policy written on this.
Yeah, I, I think I, I think you're right. Peggy, and you know, if you wanna get down to the nitty-gritty of it, any manner so as to obstruct, block, or impede traffic, just drive, just drive, just drive up Second Street from the Village Hall up to Fifth, on most any day of the week, and you have a long body F two fifty, three fifty truck sticking completely out into the lane of traffic on both sides of the road. And you're trying to navigate the traffic there in the angle parking. I'm not saying we should change that, I'm just saying it's the same situation, and we try to we try, we, we try to do the best we can to accommodate more parking. I mean, in an ideal world, that would be parallel parking there, so that, that wouldn't happen. I can't imagine what it's like for the snowplows, having to bomb down through there. Trying to clear snow with a, with a truck bed sticking out three feet into the lane, the actual lane of traffic. It's just I, I, I guess it's, how far do you wanna take the take the limits of the law? I, I don't know. Or do we just, or do we just adjust just ourselves? Just to the, adjust to the situation? I don't know. I think it's all spelled out clearly here, as clearly as we can, can do it. Mike does have a good point. Impede traffic, pedestrian or vehicle.
And, Chuck, I'm just gonna mention this to you, I know what you're talking about, on Second Street there with trucks, F one fifties and other such vehicles, but I want you to take a look at their front tire and see where it's parked. Is it parked right up to the curb? In, in some places, not, it's a foot away.
I know, I agree. I know, I know, that is the same as backing into a parking space.
Yeah.
Crazy. It's just not, it's, it's, it's a violation of statutes and ordinances, but you know, we do what we do, I guess.
Well, the other day, there was a pickup truck with a snowplow on it, parked right in Toffler's, and a pickup truck the opposite way with a, just a pickup truck. And that lane was impassable, the one vehicle had to squeeze between it, and it was just
Exactly.
It, it was legally parked, but it was sticking out in the road along with just about everything else, so.
Well, it would, actually, it wouldn't be legally parked, in my opinion, under, under this ordinance, uh, which says block or impede traffic, because it does block or impede traffic. And, and if, you know, our, our roadways are built to have two-way traffic, unimpeded two-way traffic. But we don't always have that. And it, it's winter. Yeah, people do have snowplows. People are careless. There are snowbanks, although thanks to Joe, it's very, very seldom that we have snowbanks on our main streets now. I don't know, how, how far do we wanna take this?
Well, can we just start, let's, in my opinion, we move forward and just approve this, because the language is really about mailboxes and impeding mail delivery. Move ahead with this. Get our police department to approach the owner of the Smart Car, and then from there, just move forward into being a little more vigilant about looking at cars that are consistently parked in the roadway and see where we go. But like you said, Chuck, we're not gonna solve all the problems, so this language we're approving tonight is really, I think, another issue, or the language, the discussion we're having is a little bit of another issue.
Okay, Ganser and Mike here, I'll call the question.
Bob, wait, you don't, you don't need to call the question, I don't think.
Okay.
No, we have a motion in a second. So the motion is what was that?
I, by calling the question, I'm calling the vote.
Yeah.
Then we have to vote on the vote. If, if you call the question, we, we have to vote on your, on your calling the question, and then vote again.
That's not what I wanted to do, Chuck.
Right, I think we're ready to vote.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item C, consideration discussion, approval of resolution twenty-one zero four, authorizing representatives to file applications for financial assistance from the state of Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Fund. And I'm sure we're gonna ask Drake to do that for us. And Peggy, do you want to speak on that anymore?
Uh, no, it, it just, I guess Drake can go ahead and, and add more information. It's just if there are funds available that Drake works in our, as a representative of us to file for those applications for assistance, it won't have to move to the board. He, he will go ahead and, and file those applications. Am I correct in that Drake?
Uh, you're correct in that, yeah. The village has to designate me as a authorized individual to apply for financial assistance on behalf of the village. Obviously, if there were any contracts being signed or expenses made on projects out of village funds, the village board would still need to approve projects like this. But this authorizes me to apply for financial assistance if it becomes available through the, through the environmental improvement funding from the state.
This is Chuck. I'll move the approval of resolution twenty-one dash zero four.
Answered, Mike, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item seven, fire district board report. Tammy?
Sure, we're still moving forward on the district agreement and hopefully we'll have some information about that next month. So that was the biggest thing that we discussed.
Okay, thank you Tammy. Also, the library board report?
Sure, again, we're moving forward with some exciting plans to hopefully get a little bit more solidified on how that's gonna work. And we should be able to bring more forward next month on that also.
Okay Tammy, thank you. Item ten, tree board, award of twenty twenty-one tree removal and pruning contract to Bulleye Tree and Landscape Care. Drake?
Uh, the village received four bids for the tree removal and pruning contract. Bulleye Tree and Landscape Care submitted the lowest bid while also meeting all the requirements of the bid, specifically the insurance requirements of the village and having a certified arborist on staff. Their bid was for nineteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. This is within the village's budget. The tree board met and recommended approving the award of the tree removal and pruning contract to Bulleye Tree and Landscape Care. The summary of the bids is included on page twenty-four, the final page on your packet. And you'll see the highlighted section there for Bulleye. The two lower ones did not meet, they had, they submitted lower bids but did not meet the minimum bid requirements for one reason or another.
I'm gonna go ahead and approve the tree board removal and pruning contract to Bulleye Tree and Landscape Care.
Gans, Mike, I would second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. There is no president's report. Is there anything from the rest of the board? Hearing none, we are adjourned.